Can play Mary had a little lamb on the shofar. It's not Rosh Hashanah, but you know, sometime we could do that. So that it's re, um, the, the other people don't have that particular advantage.
Well, you got a little broken up, but your tekiyagadolah was incredible.
Oh, thank you.
So who do we get to say good morning to? Good morning and shanat tova to Melanie and to the Jubileers. And Jeff and Izzy and Ellen and Andy and Jody. It's just so nice to be able to say good morning and shanat tova to people.
I'm gonna have to go call my grandchildren briefly during this and then I'll be back.
All right. Thank you for the heads up. And, um, no pressure to have your camera on. It just would be nice. It's nice to be able to see your faces. And especially because this will be so participatory today. It's, it's really more of a discussion, uh, text study and discussion. And there will be a lot of, um, it's really, you know, questions and answers and, uh, reading and, um, not a service structure. It's, it's a, we're diving a deep dive, as we've called it, into Genesis, chapter 21. Interestingly enough, the way this group, again, the technology, you know, is so new to us. Often when we use Zoom, we're able to split up into breakout groups. This account is the Temple's Zoom account, and it seems to have been set up in this format in a way that is not allowing for great break, breakout groups. And we have three of our illustrious scrollers members who have volunteered to lead breakout groups. So when we get to that part of our morning, um, I'm going to ask that Rick and Alan and Henry will, um, help to just lead that part of our discussion. Does that sound okay, Rick and Alan and Henry? Yeah, okay. Um, and I will take a backseat and just kind of enjoy. And, and you all have, I'm sure, prepared wonderful discussion, uh, questions for that part of our morning. I'm letting in a phone number. I don't know who this is. We will see. Whoever this is with a phone number, can you please let us know who you are? Good morning, shanat tova. If you can unmute yourself and say good morning. No, not yet. Okay. Well, so, um, it is nine thirty-five slash thirty-six, depending on your time. Um, my, my watch says thirty-six. So, boker, tom, shanat tova, welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here on day two. Uh, what a pleasure to have you all here. Um, I have my screen in a gallery view. I don't know about you and how, you know, what device you're using. I'm really happy you've all decided to join us. A quick, quick history about Rosh Hashanah, day two, and why we chose to do it this way. In the Reform movement, uh, there were always debates about what to do about Rosh Hashanah, day two. In the conservative and Orthodox movement, there's always been a Rosh Hashanah, day two. In the Reform movement, we did not typically do one because we felt, hmm, let me take a step back before that. And I see somebody already has a hand up. Oh, my gosh. Um, thank you. Um, so, uh, going way, way back in the Torah, there's one day of Rosh Hashanah, there's one day of Yom Kippur. But because of the difficulty in getting the word out from Israel to further out communities, we added an extra day on to many of the holidays so that we had time to get the message out beyond Israel, right? It was like travel time for the messengers. Uh, so it was, we didn't, you know, we didn't have the technology. So many days were added on, uh, many extra days were added on to holidays, like eight days. So eight days of Passover, eight days of Sukkot, an extra day of Shavuot, an extra day of Rosh Hashanah, et cetera. Obviously, we don't add an extra day onto Yom Kippur because we can't possibly fast for two days. So, once technology caught up and allowed us to have a centralized and formalized calendar, where we all know exactly when days begin and end, and we know we have, you know, Greenwich Mean Time, the, uh, Reform movement said, well, there's no need now to account for that, that messenger, that runner time, um, of getting from Israel out, uh, you know, and having the smoke signals from one mountain to the next or what, you know, however, we got the message out, we can go back to actually what Israel has always done, which is to have seven days of Sukkot, seven days of, um, Passover, one day of Rosh Hashanah, uh, one day of Shavuot. And so, the Reform movement, thinking very logically, said, we're gonna only do one day of Rosh Hashanah. But so many people feel so strongly and have such a, have an emotional attachment, especially to the second day of Rosh Hashanah, that there are so many Reform congregations that have a second day of Rosh Hashanah. One of the ways that we have adapted in many Reform congregations about the second day is we've said, okay, we'll do one, but it'll be very different. We'll make sure that it is, um, that it somehow captures a different essence from the first day, that it is less formal or it, um, has a different feeling in some way. And so we've often had a day without choir, where we've had much more participation. We're dressed down a bit. Um, we take, uh, people participating, uh, kind of as they come. And our gabys, you know, depending on who shows up, assign honors as people come. Our first day looked a lot more like that this year. And so we figured our second day was gonna be more, um, of a duplication of that. So we wanted our second day to still be different. Plus, to be, um, very, very honest, so much time has gone into the planning of every single service that we just did not have the time to put into another, um, one and a half to two hour service, you know, because every service has, I don't know, at least a hundred hours that have gone into the planning of it. Um, and so between the two, wanting to create a, the different essence and also the very real logistics of planning another service, we said, you know what, we're gonna create something different. And we said, hey, how about we do a real text study, a real, you know, deep text study? So here we are. Um, and I am very excited that we have this opportunity to use Zoom and to look at each other like this and to do a text study, uh, in this way. And, uh, hopefully we'll have a chance, a chance to really, um, hear from each other and get to know each other throughout the morning. First day of Rosh Hashanah, we, of course, heard about and, uh, thought about Genesis, chapter 22, which was the Akedah, the binding of Isaac, this story we hear and we wrestle with every single year, where God says to Abraham, kachna ed binacha, yachicha, cher hafta, ed yitzchak, take your son, your only son, your only son, Isaac, and take him up to the mountain and go ahead and sacrifice him. Now, what's problematic about that is we know Isaac is not Abraham's only son. Okay. We know there's another son. And that's why today, we are gonna look at the chapter that comes right before that, which is Genesis 21, okay, which is the reading that in our congregation and in many congregations is read on Genesis, on, um, Rosh Hashanah, day two, okay? And this is the text in which Abraham and Sarah, but we're gonna discuss really who amongst them is the one, cast out Hagar and Ishmael from their household. So through the magic of Zoom, I'm going to share my screen, uh, in just a moment after a couple other announcements. And we are going to, uh, we are going to read through chapter 21 together, discuss briefly. And then we have all kinds of discussion questions that we will do, uh, as a group. Number one, just in terms of a couple logistical things, uh, before we get into our big discussion. Number one is, um, a beloved member of our community, our congregation and our scrollers community, Paula Retzke, is currently missing. There's a silver alert that's been issued for her. And if anyone has any information on her or any way to contact her, please do let the Clinton police know. Um, we are worried and, uh, would love to be in touch with her or know that she is safe. So, um, I know, uh, a bunch of us, especially those who are closer with her, like Susan Peck, have been trying to, uh, reach out to her and her family. And so, um, we are, we're doing our best to try to find her. So again, if anyone, you know, happens to be in touch with her more often, please know that we are trying to reach her. That's number one. Number two, um, our hearts, of course, are with, uh, Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg's family. And we mourn her. And, um, we say, may her memory be a blessing. We know it is. And we know that there is so much more in terms of justice and pursuing justice that we all need to do. And this is the time in a new year that we are going to continue to vow and to promise to pursue justice. And that's what we are as Road Fate Zedek. We are pursuers of justice. And so in her honor, I think we, as a congregation, continue to recommit to that very task. Number three, I just want to show you the format of our day. And so I'm going to, um, share with you our, uh, schedule for today. Can everybody see my screen? Yeah, some nods. Yeah. Okay, good. So, um, I've been introducing and welcoming you. Ha, ha, there we are. So we're gonna do a group reading and discussion of Genesis 20, I should say 21, my bad, sorry, my number off. It's okay. We're gonna read through the chapter. We're gonna discuss the pshat. That means the basic meaning of the text. And we're gonna have some interpretation. Then, um, as I started to say before, a few of you logged on, um, something about the way this group is set up, we're not gonna be able to have small breakout sessions. But Henry Resnikov and, oh, I typed Ricky, because my brother's name is Ricky, sorry, Rick Hornig. And Alan, um, Appel, so Rick Hornig and Alan Appel will be leading us in a discussion of the text, including some, some deeper questions that we have in this document that you'll see in a little bit. And, uh, we will be taken through that discussion by the three of our wise men. And then, um, we're gonna come back around ten thirty for a large group session. I think I changed these times, actually, um, right? I think it was a different time that I wound up sending to them. And then we are going to, although I'm not sure, maybe not, we're gonna write some monologues. If you were with us yesterday morning, I discussed Midrashic monologues from characters' point of view. And, uh, share some if you're interested and do some wrap up. So, um, maybe I didn't change the time. I think this is the time that I ultimately want with. So here we are. We are going to read through the text. Everyone, does that sound good for everybody? Yeah, good. All right. Um, and, uh, great. So I'm gonna share my screen now to a different screen. Okay. So I would love to have a volunteer to read our chapter for us. Who would like to, to volunteer? Anyone wanna? Lisa Clappholz, are you raising your hand? Or are you just holding your phone? Or is somebody, somebody unmuted? Who unmuted?
I did. I did, Rabbi. Susan.
Susan, go for it.
The Lord took note of Sarah, as he had promised, and the Lord did for Sarah.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Hold on. I skipped. Just a moment, please. Please hold. All right.
Did for Sarah, as he has spoken. Sarah conceived and bore a son to Abraham in his old age, at the set time of which God had spoken. Abraham gave his newborn son, whom Sarah had borne him, the name of Isaac. And when his son Isaac was eight days old, Abraham circumcised him, as God had commanded him. Now Abraham was a hundred years old when his son Isaac was born to him. Sarah said, "God has brought me laughter. Everyone who hears will laugh with me." And she added, "Who would have said to Abraham that Sarah would suckle children? Yet I have borne a son in his old age." The child grew up and was weaned, and Abraham held a great feast on the day that Isaac was weaned. Sarah saw the son whom Hagar, the Egyptian, had borne to Abraham, playing. She said to Abraham, "Cast out that slave woman and her son, for the son of that slave shall not share in the inheritance with my son Isaac." The matter distressed Abraham greatly, for it concerned a son of his. But God said to Abraham, "Do not be distressed over the boy or your slave. Whatever Sarah tells you, do as she says, for it is through Isaac that offspring shall be continued for you. As for the son of the slave woman, I will make a nation of him too, for he is your seed." Early next morning, Abraham took some bread and a skin of water and gave them to Hagar. He placed them over her shoulder, together with the child, and sent her away. And she wandered around in the wilderness of Beersheba. When the water was gone from the skin, she left the child under where the bushes and went and sat down at a distance. A bow shot away, for she thought, "Let me not look on as the child dies." And sitting thus afar, she burst into tears. God heard the cries of, the cry of the boy, and an angel of God called to Hagar from heaven and said to her, "What troubles you, Hagar? Fear not, for God has heeded the cry of the boy where he is. Come, lift up the boy and hold him by the hand, for I will make a great nation of him." Then God opened her eyes, and she saw a well of water. She went and filled the skin with water and let the boy drink. God was with the boy, and he grew up, he dwelt in the wilderness and became a bowman. He lived in the wilderness of Peron, and his mother got away for him from the land of Egypt. At that time, Abimele and Phokal, chief of his troops, said to Abraham, "God is with you in everything that you do. Therefore, swear to me here by God, that you will not deal falsely with me, or with my kith and kin, but will deal with me and with the lands in which you have sojourned, as loyally as I have dealt with you." And Abraham said, "I swear it." Then Abraham reproached Abimele for the well of water, which the servants of Abimele had seized. But Abimele said, "I do not know who did this. You did not tell me, nor have I heard of it until today." Abraham took sheep and oxen and gave them to Abimele, and the two of them made a pact. Abraham then set seven youths of the flock by themselves. And Abimele said to Abraham, "What mean these seven youths, which you have set apart?" He replied, "You are to accept these seven youths from me as proof that I dug this well." Hence, the place was called Beersheba, for there are two of them, for there the two of them swore an oath. When they had concluded the pact at Beersheba, Abimele and Phokal, chief of his troops, departed and returned to the land of the Philistines. Abraham planted a tamarisk at Beersheba and invoked there the name of the Lord, the everlasting God. Abraham resided in the land of the Philistines a long time.
Thank you, Susan. And then immediately from there, we go right into the Akedah. So we have this story about Hagar and Ishmael being sent away, this interesting story about this well in Beersheba, and then immediately the call to have Isaac sacrificed. So, um, I'm gonna stop sharing for a second, but feel free to call, to hearken back to the text. But, um, if you wanna raise the little blue hand, or if you wanna flag me down, because I can see you, what are some initial thoughts or reactions to the, to the story? What jumps out at you?
Michael, do you wanna speak?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, Michael Peck, ladies and gentlemen, mayor. Oh, you were there. Go ahead.
Shalom, Rabbi.
Shanat tova.
Happy New Year and good yom ha'atzh to everybody. So Sean and I, Sean had memory of a shalom. We used to spend, uh, time together and, um, we thought it'd be kind of interesting to, um, to do a entire session on just, um, the dark stories of Torah. And the Akedah, of course, is the gold standard, but this Hagar story is up there. Shekin is up there. Pankas is up there. Water, um, water is a sotar. So trying to understand this Hagar story, um, it doesn't make Sarah look good. And, um, uh, women pretty much get a, a free ride in, um, in text, except, um, Sarah here. Sarah's got, uh, Hagar problems. And, um, uh, the text is very clear about what happens. And it's also very clear that Hagar has, um, prophetic, um, abilities. And it's also clear that God, for, uh, whatever his reasons are, you know, started this, uh, enmity between us and the descendants of, uh, Ishmael.
Yes.
But what's, but what's not clear is, um, is the relationship of Hagar to Isaac. And, um, I'm sorry?
That's a great point.
So, we know Hagar marries, um, Abraham later, in twenty-five, and we know that there's lots of stepsons from the, uh, Hagar's twenty-five. Yeah, Abraham remarries.
Well, he marries a woman named Kattura. Are you suggesting that Hagar is Kattura?
Pretty much everybody does, Rabbi. There's a lot of source material on that.
Well, there's a lot of Midrashic material on it, right?
Yeah, I mean, if you call it Rosh, it's Midrashic.
I am distinguishing.
Take your corners.
Just distinguishing Torah from Midrash.
You know, so we have this whole Hagar story and her relationship to, uh, to Isaac. And there is, there is a, uh, I, I can't find it. I've been looking for it for the last few minutes. There's a suggestion somewhere in text that, um, Ishmael, I'm sorry, that Isaac, after the binding, finds Hagar.
Yes.
Hagar's relationship to Isaac is, um, it's Mizrahi, but you gotta pull it out. It, it's not, it's not in the text per se. It's not peshat. But, but if we were to speculate, which is kind of the fun of Midrash, Hagar's role in the upbringing of Isaac is a lot more than what appears to be. And her, his, her relationship with Abraham is a lot more than it, um, appears to be. And, um, if you put that in context of Sarah, yeah, she's lost her husband to, uh, the concubine, and she's lost her son to, uh, the maternal feelings of, um, of Hagar.
Very cool. Thank you. Really cool thoughts. Um,
Thanks, Rabbi.
You, you pulled out a lot of the, the complicated feelings that are going on here. You've got a competition between Sarah and Hagar. You've got, we're not sure about the relationship between Isaac and Ishmael. And then you've got the generational complications, right, between Sarah and Ishmael, between Hagar and Isaac. You know, there's so much complication. Never mind between Abraham and his children. Um, so, um, and thank you for helping us distinguish. Uh, I think it's just important, especially for those who are, um, less versed in Torah study. I just wanna always make the distinction between what is actually in the Torah and what is Midrash? What is interpretation? So that we remember, um, where these texts are found. So thank you, mayor. Harriet, did you have your hand up?
I did, but, uh, a different comment.
Go for it.
So it's always the other woman. Anbet, and she's the mom of Isaac, the laughing boy, who doesn't become the, uh, paternal leader of Jews. That's Jacob, I think. And, uh, and he, he's, uh, like, uh, Yitzchok, probably nurtured by Hagar. Sarah's wicked old and likely not, uh, able to bear. That, that's not a miracle. It's a slight of history. Maybe.
Sorry.
So are you suggesting Isaac is also Hagar's child?
I am, indeed.
Oh, Susan has given you a what face?
Susan Peck?
Yep.
Thank you.
That is, that is a very cool and scandalous idea. We have some, some Midrashim to write about that. Very cool, Harriet. Thank you. So Rita, I saw your hand up. Rita Christopher. And then Melanie, I saw your hand. Rita, are you there? Oh, she had to go, I think, talk to her grandkids for a second, so we might have lost her. So we'll come back to Rita. Melanie, I saw your hand. Uh, we are muted. And Susan, I'm gonna mute you just in case.
All right, here we are.
Here you are.
I, I figured it out. So I was, I was just going to comment. This is one story that has always captured my imagination. And there's a painting, uh, by Charles Paul Landau of, uh, Hagar giving Ishmael water by the well. I, I highly recommend you look at it. It, it's just so, um, moving and compelling. And if I had a chance, I would, it inspired a three-part sonnet, um, from Hagar's point of view. And I, I didn't, I didn't look for it, but I'll send it to some of you if you're interested. It's, um, Hagar's whole take on, on this, uh, her excommunication.
Here, here is, it's a, you, a three-part sonnet written by?
Me.
Oh, oh.
Hagar's lament. I, I, I don't know if I've ever given it to you, but it's based on the painting by Charles Paul Landau. Just very moving.
Here is the painting.
Oh, you found it. Wow. You're good.
That's the joy of Zoom. It's so interesting. It's so.
That's it.
Yeah. It's reminiscent of so many other biblical paintings.
So it's that painting that, um, inspired a, a three-part sonnet that I, I wish I'd thought to bring it to the meeting.
Send it to us after. Thank you.
I will. I will.
Oh, you know, and you feel the, um, the parental pull, you know, or even the human pull of, you know, I can't watch this child die. Um, can you put the name of the, the painting? Yeah, absolutely. Let me, let me grab that. Here's the link. This is, see, this is the fun part of doing all this. Um, so thank you, Melanie.
So what I'll do is I'll send this, I'll send this sonnet to the rabbi. I don't have everyone's emails, but I'll, I'll figure it out after the weekend is over. And then maybe the, maybe if you want to forward it to others.
Um, yeah, we would love to see the sonnet. Thank you. Always wonderful to celebrate the art of our congregation.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so.
I will mute myself.
Thank you, Melanie. Um, Susan, I'll get to you in a second. I just wanna see that anyone who hasn't had a chance to speak up yet, who has any responses to the initial chapter. I'm looking to see any hands. I'm looking to see any hands. Izzy, please.
I just have a question. Are the wells the same?
As?
Is the well that the that Hagar finds the same as the one that Abi Melik has? Is there any connection between those two things? Or is that they just happen to both be two wells in the same thing? I mean, I just was curious. I don't know.
That's a really good question. I don't know. I don't think so. Um. I don't think so. I think one is kind of a mystical well that God makes available to her in her wandering. The other is a well that that Abraham digs and seems like more of a political thing, that Isaac is going to go and redig later as when he's an adult. But really good question. Wow. Excellent, Izzy. So Susan, go ahead.
So Rabbi, I guess, you know, I can't help looking at this through chapter 21 through my 21st century lens and
Great.
you know, I think I am channeling Boothby to Ginsberg this morning. I have to comment that, you know, we let, you know, we let Abraham and God totally off the hook here. I mean, why is it all laid on Sarah? I mean, she reacted emotionally. Abraham's the one who took some portion of water, you know, and puts them out in the desert and leaves them there. And it's God who says to him, oh, you can do that. It's okay. Because I'm going to build a great nation for Isaac. So I guess this is a suggestion there that somehow, you know, Ishmael is going to survive. Ishmael and Hagar are going to survive this ordeal. But it's it's really troubling. And I, you know, I am aware that there is some Midrash that has. Well, I don't want to complicate my comment. I'm going to refrain from saying anything else.
There are a lot of Midrashim. And I like that you're bringing God and Abraham into it and not wanting to only blame Sarah. Because what's what we want to make sure to do is to remember that this whole thing has been set in motion already a few steps back. And why is it here in the first place, I think, is a big question. And it's one that I have to give Henry credit for. And this is actually a bit of a segue now to the discussion questions that Henry and Rick and Alan are going to have for us when we think in more of a meta sense as to why we have these stories here in the first place. And so I've just I've just made Henry and Alan and Rick co-hosts as well, so that they can share their screens, whoever wants to do that and lead for the texts. And so I'm going to turn it over to y'all. Who would like to start?
I vote Rick starts.
Just please unmute yourself.
I will start because I hope to read, if I can manipulate the screens properly, I will read Hager's lament or Hager's Fever, A Lament, which is a beautiful poem written by, I think, Rachel Eliza Griffiths. It's a gorgeous poem. And one of the things that I think is really important that we do if we're trying to think in terms of Midrash and so forth, is understand, at least in contemporary American literature or in American literature period, Hagar has been used as a metaphor for the power and pride of black women. Aunt Hager's Children, Edmund Jones's great book. There is a whole stream of American literature using Hagar as a symbol or metaphor for the relationships between masters and servant women. And this poem, Hager's Fever, A Lament, to me, really captures that. And I think if we're going to try and think about Midrash and the process of Midrash, which is in some ways contextualizing an ancient text in modern times. Let me see if I can get my screen and read the poem. Would that be okay for everybody? Let's see if I think I got it. Hager's Fever, A Lament, Rachel Eliza Griffiths is the author. Look how I look. I look awful. No wonder he didn't want me. What will be left for me after you take the sparrows in your mouth? My empress breasts, gourds of ash and milk, not enough. These shoals of hair weigh my shoulders down. Coils of water fill with mer, too nappy for you. I smell like what I am, a woman. I gave you all the pears inside my womb. No wonder, no wonder. You have chased the life away in me as winter hunts the leaves of fall. What is a mountain without clouds? You stuff my fruit in your pocket. I should have known your holy pockets full of nothingness, trifling arrogant nights. If my thighs were the earth, your life would be enough. How moonlight rivers the edges of my lips, how fog tendrils valleys early, early in the morning, cold. Guitar say I'm pretty. Reba say I'm hers. Pilot knows what the earth is made of, bones and unky shivering things. Where did the women go behind the mirror? Guitar say I'm pretty, black. Reba say I'm hers. Pilot says hush, but I can't wait. I can't see where the woman went, dancing across shattered glass lakes. The world gave me sight instead of eyes. Take that mirror away across the lake. The milk you left inside of me for safekeeping is not sweet. What's growing now ain't safe. The mirror is hush, baby, lining up like gentlemen. No, they are buzzards away across the lake. Mama gave me lipstick, gave me shadows for the lids of my eyes, shadow blue and sweet as a drink of arsenic. Gave me silk panties for this old music box, gave me garters long and black as syllable. Give me spider lashes and poppy cheeks. I want to look like Leopatra. Give me cologne, vanilla talcum and red lacquer for my toes. Give me the shine of gloss for my lips. Give me scarves and lilies. I'm young, mama. Don't hush me. Don't hush this. I need heels. I need patent leather heels to cover my hooves. Give me live for my roots. Give me songs that don't make me cry out for him when I'm awake. Give me a magnolia pink ballad that will make him weep my blood. Mama, I don't love like a virgin. I don't laugh like a tree of dancing larks. I don't stay wet and tight anymore when a man come knocking for what he really don't want. Music can fade a braid of unwashed hair. Look at those buzzards' world. Give me their knowledge, how to wait death out, how to rot with grace. Hush and listen to those buzzards. They have his dead wings, his gift for flight and deceit. No, mama, he don't want me. He don't want me. Why don't he like my hair? Why don't he eat my pear? No wonder he can't find me. Buzzards' highest mountains, all around, all around my fever. It's a tremendous poem. It's a phenomenal poem. And if we just look at the story in itself and whether we accept the traditional or literal meaning that it's always the other woman, which is really kind of a to say the least patriarchal way of of looking at it. Or if we just kind of step back and understand in the story that one of the highlights of the story is that this is the second time, because it happens again in chapter 16, that the divine responds to Hagar and intervenes upon someone who is less fortunate, someone who is clearly in the powerless position. And think about that perhaps as one of the messages here, despite all the ugliness and despite all of the pain. And I think that the poem itself prompts us to understand that there is something divinely inspired in enduring and facing and openly acknowledging suffering and rejection and loss. And that seems to be at least one level of the story that I'd like to continue to focus on. And the poem, Griffith's poem is just, I'm sorry for butchering it. I hadn't read it in a long, long time. But I want to thank Melanie for reminding us of it, because it really is incredibly important to think about who is Hagar in our midst? Which people of all of us are the ones who are cast out? Who are, I mean, you know, obviously, who are the single mothers? Who are the women who have to provide for children in a very harsh and unforgiving wilderness? And I think that might be just the place to start.
Would you like people to address that? Or do you want to turn it over to one of the other leaders? But you're still muted, Rick.
I've said my piece for now.
Alan or Henry, or does anyone else want to?
I'll be happy. Unless people want to talk about Rick's, I'll just throw out my ideas.
So you want me to call? You want me to bring up the discussion questions? Or do you want to say a few?
No, I'm just going to read what I've written down. It's easier for me.
Okay.
Good. So I looked at this somewhat differently, sort of coming to a similar conclusion. But the first question I asked myself is Ishmael circumcised? Has Abraham brought him into the covenant? Has he taught him about the covenant? Is he really his son in that sense? Not the physical sense, but in the covenantal sense. And what I'm what I'm trying to struggle with is if you go back to chapter 17, verse four, God says to Abraham, you should be the father of a multitude of nations. So if Abraham actually believes in God, which I believe he does, then why is he distressed? He knows that Ishmael's future has been determined, just as Isaac's has. So to me, the message here really is that God is teaching us early on what it is to be cast out, to become strangers. And I think we get too caught up in the focusing on the the detail of the story rather than the message God is giving us to remind us as the Jewish people that we will be cast out and we will be struggling for many generations to come, even though the Abrahams promised this great covenant. And that's the lesson we have to learn for compassion, that we were always cast out from day one, or will be cast out from day one. And how do we deal with that?
So maybe Rabbi, maybe I pop in here and just respond to a couple of things said. Is that cool?
Sure. Why don't we do that? And then we can kind of synthesize the together the ideas.
So one of the good things about scrollers is we, over the years, we we kind of stake out positions and areas of interest. And whereas Henry is looking at the big picture and what it means, what's the lesson that we should learn? You know, the theological inference for us to take. And what did what did what did Henry, you just said, we shouldn't focus on the detail of the story? Well, I love to focus on the detail of stories. And what strikes me about Hagar's predicament and this, all of the characters, including God, but especially our holy family here, is how screwed up they all are. And and you know, one of the glories of these ancient Hebrew texts is they're not ashamed to let all the dirty laundry hang out. And if one of one of the ways to kind of address what's happening and to be maybe less shocked in a way, is we have to be careful to, you know, to look at what these people are doing to each other in context. Henry and Rick, Melanie refer to the history that precedes this moment is so fraught. So when one asks the question, why Abraham would do this to his son at the request of his wife, it might make if you've read the, you know, week after week, the preceding chapters, there's terrible bad blood between Sarah and Abraham. In at least one instance, I think, two instances, he basically gives his wife, you know, in a sexual permission to have a sexual consort with with I can't remember the details, but he says, he says to her, you're a beautiful woman. You will protect me as we are on our journey. Say you are my sister. So that when the local chieftain desires you, you go to him. It's the price we'll pay for our success. So he does that twice. And even even if you go deeper back than that, correct me if I'm wrong, but do they not have the same father? Abraham, I believe, has married his half-sister. They share the same father who is who is Tara, I believe. And then they're different mothers. So there, you know, maybe their behavior is, you know, bad genetics or the fact that he used her sexually in order to protect himself. So that when she gets jealous in our chapter here, my God, does he owe her one? So that's part of my take on this. And and the the details of the story, you know, are what what grabbed me specifically as to Hagar, the detail there that strikes me to think about it, and I'm not sure. Oh, and oh, and Hagar has had history with Sarah. Sarah has banished her before. This is the second banishment. She got jealous of her before. She got jealous of her when she gave her to Abraham and he liked her. It wasn't supposed to be that way. So Hagar is angry and damaged and kind of wonderful. But my detail question for her, if we look at the detail of the story, is why really, from a narrative or a character point of view, why would she separate herself from her son Ishmael at the moment he's going to die? One answer is that she knows he's not going to die, because previously she's been assured he will be a great nation. On the other hand, as a mother, you it seems to me you would want to be with your child at this moment. The text seems to require that she be separate from him in order to explain the businesses of his becoming a bowman. They want the ideology of the Kesha, that bow distance, that's what it's there for on some level. But from a character point of view, it's a terrible thing for a mother to do, it seems to me, maybe explained by the bad history. So that's where I leave.
Alan can ask, but is it also explained that she has faith in God, that she believes what God has said?
Yeah, well, it could it could it could explain that. But but why are those two contradictory? Why couldn't she hold the boy while the good news is coming?
Why are they contradictory?
They're not.
You just said.
No, it seems to me that. So repeat your question. I'm sorry, Henry.
What I struggle with is that Abraham's been assured of the future of his sons.
So has she.
So was she. So was Sarah. So I'm always captured to the very opening question the rabbi asked. Why is Abraham distressed?
That's right. And from a from a story point of view, you spilled the beans already. You're absolutely right. Where is the drama? These characters all know that it's going to have a happy ending, so to speak.
And that's the distress is that he's losing Hagar.
All right, so. Hang on, we actually didn't get to the Abraham distressed question yet. Thank you, our wise scroller gentleman. If you are, by the way, not one of our usual scroller folks and you don't join us on Saturday mornings at 9:00 AM, you are always, always welcome. And now is a perfect time to consider joining us because we're about to return to the very, very beginning of the Torah with Baruch Shit very, very soon. And so you'd be starting at the beginning and you'd be with us for a whole new reading of the Torah. So now is the time. And every year, I'm just throwing in a really, really quick, a quick advertisement before we get back into the discussion. Every year, we've been choosing a new lens through which to read the text. And right now, we've been polling the group overwhelmingly. The group has been choosing Ramban Nachmanides, a mystical reading of the text. We've been, yeah, mystical reading. So I just picked up the Ramban commentary on the Torah, which will include an introduction to Jewish mysticism and lots of fun learning for me. Y'all can pick this up. It was over $100 for me to get the five set thing commentary. But we're going to be learning it together. So this looks like it's going to be the mystical year of scrollers. So yeah, really exciting. So, okay, I'm going to go back to sharing my screen for the document. So we can look at this question of was Abraham distressed? Okay. Because this, this was my first question for the discussion. The rabbis seem quite concerned about Abraham's distress in verse 11. Because Abraham does say, it does say in the text that Abraham was distressed. And let me go back there for a second. I'm not sure if you can see this, hang on. Are you with me still? Can you still see the Sepharia text? No, do I need to stop and share it again? Hold on, come with me over to Sepharia. Okay. So, and I think Jody had noticed this, was it Jody who noticed this? So 11, "The matter distressed Abraham greatly, for it concerned a son of his." Okay, so we have this note. Now note, we don't know which son. It's vague. It's playing the pronoun game. Okay. We don't know which, which son it is. And the Hebrew is not specific either. It distressed Abraham and we don't know, is it which son? Is it Isaac that he's worried about? Is it Ishmael? Okay, so then, let's go back to the question. Henry's going for coffee. Enjoy, Henry, bring us all some. So here is, "The Hebrew is unclear as to which son he is concerned about. Which do you think it is? And why do you think that is? And how do the following interpretations affect your understanding?" So I just want to bring in these interpretations. This is from Tan Kuma Shemot. This is now, now we're getting into Midrash. So the rabbis asked these questions over the last 2,000 years. Okay. They said, wait a minute, this is a, this is a question. We've identified something vague in the text that we don't understand, just like we all have today. Wait a minute. And they said, Abraham, Abraham was distressed on account of his son. And they're immediately saying Ishmael. And why? Because he heard that he had taken to degenerate ways. Dun dun dun. Really quick to label Ishmael a degenerate. Okay. And then Radak, okay, so we're going to hear about this particular commentator who said, who made this interpretation. "Even though Ishmael was the son of a slave woman, he was at the same time also Abraham's son. And he loved him as a father loves one's son, especially seeing that he was his firstborn. He was merciful towards him like a father is merciful to all his children. Moreover, he had taught him to behave and had taught him the ways of the Lord. In fact, if he, Abraham, had taught all and sundry the ways of the Lord, he had most certainly not neglected to teach these ways to his own son. Therefore, the request by Sarah to expel his own son was a source of great chagrin to him. Abraham kept his chagrin to himself and did not express anger at his wife, as he was concerned with preserving shalom bait, peaceful marital relations with his wife, oy vey. This was the state of affairs until God intervened in the matter later with the well and everything." So hmm. What do you think about these two things? Harriet, I see your hand first and then Izzy.
So the expulsion of a son because he is degenerate? Because a son is, or because the father is?
Ooh. Great question.
Second, in every family, turmoil is like a baby's thing over their crib. They pull on one and the others kind of do that. I can't get the word, but.
Mobile?
Mobile. Right, thanks. So what we, and this is, I can't remember who made this remark about screwed up families. That's what we're seeing, family turmoil. It's the essence of Judaism.
The screwed up families?
Yeah. Yeah.
Put that on our business cards. When we try to sell Judaism to people, come join us.
We're in therapy.
We're all in therapy.
Yeah.
We are, but, oh, well, I guess all our movies are about that.
Hence, hence the prayer, oy ma shul, my synagogue, what soros? Sorry.
But um. So, yeah, thank you. So interesting. So who's degenerate? Is it the father? Is it the son? Okay. The second reading, of course, adds much more sympathy and empathy. And so that's really quite fascinating as well. Is Abraham looking much more lovingly towards his child? Any other, so Izzy, Izzy, you were next.
Well, I was thinking about the distress part. And if, if you were casting out your son and you were certain that he was going to do great and make nations, the distress might have been eased. And so I wonder if there's some crisis of faith, which then kind of goes into the, the binding seems so ridiculous that you would like, God tells you to go kill your son and you're like, all right. I mean, I wonder if the crisis of faith where he isn't sure if he should, if the son will survive out in the desert, then makes him feel terrible. And so then he listens to God literally when he says, now go kill your son. Like, I wonder if the, there's a connection there in the distress.
In that Abraham knows, you've already promised me all this stuff. So you're asking me to do these ridiculous things, but I know that nations are coming. So I'm just going to keep going through these motions?
Well, I mean, maybe he wasn't sure that the nations really were coming. Because why would you be distressed if you were totally, totally sure the nations were coming? I mean, maybe the like, not really being positive if all these things I'm being promised are real. So I'm scared to put my son out into the desert. And so I, I think that that then, you can imagine that those feelings of uncertainty and not being sure that you just put your son out into the desert to die potentially. So now God's saying, now go do this with your. I just wonder if there's a connection there between the feelings of not trusting God? And then as a result, putting full trust in God as a guilt response? Or something along those lines?
Ooh, okay, very interesting. So what happens in 21 and 22 being reactions to each other? Very interesting. So Pex, hang on, we haven't yet heard from David Tillis. So David Tillis, please.
So I think there's special word that we're not looking at. And it's the word that describes what Sarah sees Isaac doing, or sorry, what she sees Ishmael doing. And the word is mitzahakeh.
Thank you, that's in the next discussion question.
But I think all these questions overlap. And I'm going to try to.
Go ahead.
Emphasize the overlap in a minute after I talk about the word. So whatever mitzahakeh means, and however it's translated in this particular usage of it, there are at least two other usages of it that in different parts of Torah that I think are really instructive. So when Isaac says of his wife Rebecca to Abi Melich of Girar, she is my sister. And Abi Melich looks out the window of his tent or his castle or whatever. And he sees them doing something and he realizes that in fact, they're married. It's mitzahakeh. And when the people are dancing around the golden calf and God and Moses are outraged, it is again, mitzahakeh. So my sense of it is that it's something sexual. Why is that important? So now I want to kind of deal with the overlap. And I'm going to make an assumption that apart from culture, at a purely emotional level, that 3,000 years ago, the desolation felt by a rejected woman and abandoned son was just as poignant then as it is now. And the, the difficulties of children in sorting out the selecting process imposed upon them by parents is just as tragic then as it is now. But this isn't the novel. It doesn't really develop those themes. It puts them there, but doesn't really develop them. It's not a novel. I mean, we can imagine how a novelist would have written this and it's a different story. I mean, Faulkner would have turned it into a trilogy. So what do we have? We have God making a statement that the future pathway of this family is through Isaac. We don't know if that's a prediction, a command, or a prophecy. But we also know that Abraham's not making it happen. Sarah now sees Ishmael doing something sexual. Don't know what it is. And so the question arises, hmm. In this pathway in which Isaac is going to be the future, what are we going to do with Ishmael's wife and baby? So the moment of selection is, is, is there, it's right there. And the thing that's really interesting is we get all these, you know, histories of Europe from the 13th century, where they don't deal with the, the perils that these dynastic successions impose upon the family. So it's not a novel, but there is this, this sort of discordant, I don't want to call it a melody, but if this were music, the bass line wouldn't match the melody. You know, we have a prophecy that it's all going to be good. It's all going to be through Isaac. And yet we have these terrible things that are happening. That, I think, is the tension of the story. And I think it's a deliberate tension because it's, it's not subtle. It hits us over the head. And here we are, 3,000 years later, still trying to figure it out. So, I mean, Harriet, you're right. We have all these crazy families. And the problem is, how does, how does the family craziness, the difficulties, which to some extent, we could say are perhaps caused by God? I mean, he didn't have to make Sarah barren for all those decades. If we want to, if we want to think of it that way. But how does that fit in with Henry's theory of this is all a covenantal relationship? Which is a historical process? And well, history and theology blend together, but it's, it's not about the family. And we have to deal with both. And I'll leave it at this because I'm reminded of Sean's refrain. And somebody needs to mention Sean today. And I don't, I'm not going to do it exactly right. But he remarked all the time that God works with the crooked timber of humanity. And that's the tension. That's, that's what we're seeing in these stories. You know, we get all these laws in Leviticus and we get all these military escapades and numbers. But the tensions in these stories where we have to deal with our lives in the midst of this prophetic covenant. Anyway, I talked too much.
Thank you. So I'm gonna take, sorry, Pex, hang on, I got to make sure I'm taking new people. I appreciate your patience. Andy and then Pex. And then we're going to shift into our final, our final section. So we have Andy and then Pex. And then we're gonna go into our final section of our morning because time is going very, very quickly. And so, thank you, Andy. And then Susan and Mayer will make our concluding comment before we go into our brief creative writing section or even just kind of jotting down some notes from today, if you'd like to do that. And then sharing some of our writings, if you would like. So Andy, please.
Yeah, I had a question for you, first preface. I, I find all this really fascinating. And I, and I've always found one of the cool things about scrollers is that we're all interpreting it based upon our lives. And I think about that more now, frankly, because one of the very famous Cornell professors, and I think about Cornell because Ruth Gator, Bill Ginsberg was also a Cornellian, talked about how folks interpret history through their own lens. And that the key task of historians is to try to keep that limited and in perspective. But one of the things that fascinates me here is that, that I think that is, is I've always understood the story that casting out of the dark Ishmael. Ishmael was always a little kid, but he isn't. He's 13, 14, probably 14 years old. And I think that David's interpretation sounds really, you know, like it, it makes a great deal of sense. If it was a, you know, if it was a baby is seems, you know, always as I heard the story as a kid. You know, you might have the technical issue of primogeniture. But as a practical matter, Abraham choosing Isaac would make sense. But here you got Ishmael, who is himself about to become a warrior. I mean, it makes it a much more serious issue. I'm wondering whether over, over time, though, that story has been viewed differently. In other words, was it, was it generally viewed that Ishmael was older? Were there times when Ishmael has been viewed as older? And times when he's been viewed as, as, as a little kid? Or is it, you know, has that changed over time? In terms of the Midrash and, and, you know, and then just interpretations?
He's always, he's always the firstborn. He's 13 years older. We know, it's, it's key to so many different plot points that he was born first. We know that Sarah was barren. And this was a source of so much sadness and unhappiness for Abraham and Sarah. And so ultimately, Sarah turns to her handmaiden and says, please sleep with my husband and you will give birth basically on my behalf. And it will be as if it is my child. Then there's echoes of Handmaid's Tale here, of course. And so Ishmael is supposed to be Sarah's child. You know, it's like Sarah's credit. But Hagar winds up, according to the text, getting this feeling of, oh, wait a minute, look what I can do. I, I became pregnant. And she, according to the text, starts to feel superior to Sarah because she became, she's fertile and she became pregnant so quickly. And Ishmael is born. Abraham is so proud. And Sarah sees this attitude that a Hagar supposedly has taken on and wants to get rid of them. But doesn't. And they're, yeah, Hagar is similar to Panina, right? Panina and Chana, that whole, you know, it's, it's a parallels kind of story. Thank you, Ellen. And then, of course, you have the visitors who finally come to Sarah and say, at the age of 90, you are finally going to become pregnant. And that's when she laughs and she's like, I'm 90. I'm not going to get. I'm not going to get pregnant. I probably went through menopause at least 40 years ago. And they're like, no, no, you're going to get pregnant. Don't worry. And I'm going to have, you're going to have Isaac. And so she laughs. And laughter is litzachik. Litzachik is like yitzchak. And so she names him laughter. And mitzachik, as David was saying, this gets back to the Hebrew, and that's, I just want to make this point, that mitzachik, the playing, this is the key that's really, you know, part of the question is yitzchak's name is laughter. Mitzachik, many of the midrashim do question whether it was a molestation that was taking place, and that was part of what was Sarah, that Sarah witnessed and was very uncomfortable about, a 13-year-old child molesting the baby. And so David, you're correct that there is a shadow of that that is picked up on by the rabbis. So Andy, the text is very clear that Ishmael is much older and should have inherited everything. And the Quran, of course, takes all these stories and puts Ishmael as the prime as the star in them. So the Akedah, the sac, it's a sacrifice of Ishmael. Abraham is told to take Ishmael up to the mountain and almost sacrifice him. Right? So the Dome of the Rock is important because it's the rock where Ishmael was almost sacrificed. And so many of these stories are rewritten with Ishmael as the key character. Abraham is still the father. But so it's very interesting to read these few, these first stories and to see the way Ishmael takes the key role. Did I address your questions here?
Actually, most of that, you know, I
You knew already.
Yeah, but again, it's just as I read 20, whatever, 22, or 21, rather, read 21, it just seemed like it was suggesting that Ishmael was much younger.
Than 13?
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
That, when you go back to chapter 17, it's clear when you do the numbers that he's 13 or 14.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think he is.
You know, clearly it's not. And I just, I didn't know whether it was, yeah, I'm just saying, it's just, that had always been my impression from reading.
It says he's put on Hagar's back. Maybe just, I don't know.
Put him on his back. She laid him down to watch him die. I mean, a 13, 14-year-old kid could probably survive, boy, could probably survive as well as she could.
Good point. You know, so here's what the rabbis would say. When they would say, because the rabbis would say to you in their wonderful rabbinic brush-off-your-question kind of way, Ain mukdam ve'ain me'uchar ba'Torah. There is no before and after in the Torah. Chronology doesn't matter. So it's very possible, it's very possible these things are not in chronological order, and that maybe he does get younger. I don't know if it is addressed. But as far as it is set out, it doesn't give any indication that he's younger because of the order. Okay, Pex, you have waited so patiently.
Actually, it was Michael, but I have something I want to say.
That's why I know who it was, so Pex.
Let me just say one, a couple of things, actually. I'll point out what Michael wanted to point out, but I just have to, because of your comment you just made, Rabbi, I have to recite one of my very favorite quotes of all time. It's Albert Einstein, who said, you know, past, present, and future are all an illusion, however persistent. You know, and that's just this concept that, you know, time is flat, you know, everything that's happening has already happened. It's happened. It's there. It's but in any event, Michael wanted to point out in Lethmakah, which I think is very difficult to read this chapter without going back to Genesis 17. And Michael wanted to point out verses 21. Oh, was it 1917? I don't forget what. But anyway, where, you know, the God, in 21, 17, 21, is it, my covenant I'll maintain with Isaac, whom Sarah shall bear to you. And when he was done, I'm sorry, no. He says that the portion that Michael wanted to point out was that I'm getting along because I lost my place, but that God was going to create a the nation through his covenant would be with Ishmael, and that's repeated in Lethmakah, I mean with Isaac. And so it's almost though, you know, but as a consolation, I will create a great nation for Ishmael, for the progeny of Ishmael as well, but my covenant, clearly, my covenant is with Isaac. And so that's, I think, what Michael wanted to point out, but that's it. That was, I think that was his comment. I think he actually put it in the chat.
Thank you. And Henry, in our preparations for today, Henry, if I'm quoting you correctly, you had made a similar comment that there's a, it's so interesting that that Ishmael, that there's a difference between covenant and inheritance. Do you want to say anything about that?
Well, the question I asked is that Sarah seems to say that she doesn't want Ishmael to share the inheritance, which to me is a physical thing you leave to your heirs. And I asked the question of Ellen and Rick and the Rabbi, is the word for inheritance the same as the word for covenant? And Rabbi said, no, two different words. So it's very clear that God says that my covenant shall go through Isaac, even though Ishmael shall get part of the inheritance by being a great nation, as Esau does. Also, we see this repeated with Esau and Jacob. And it's confusing because it's still, I still ask the question as a father, and I do accept, Andy, that he's 13 years old. I think it's pretty clear. Even if he knows God's, if Abraham believes in God and believes in the promise that's been given, has he taught Ishmael about the covenant? It's hard to believe he hasn't. Susan pointed out that Ishmael is circumcised along with everyone else. So he's aware of the birthright. He's aware of the whole notion. And is that the great distress that Abraham's feeling? That he's torn between God's two messages?
Because he only gets circumcised, remember, at age 13. So all this is like jelling pretty late in his life.
But that's what it says. It's in verse 23.
Yeah.
Yeah, he obviously wasn't eight days old. He circumcised the entire household.
Yeah, he says he was 13.
So we've been given a lot to think about. And if you go back to Harriet's comment, all too real comment, that there's a lot of dysfunction in Jewish families, certainly in the biblical families, and we probably have plenty if we think about our whole system of characters. I invite you to take a few minutes now, and please do. Find a piece of paper or pad of paper. Jot down some notes. Maybe even from, my invitation is, from one of the characters' point of view. You have a number to choose from. You have Abraham, Sarah, Hagar, Isaac, and Ishmael. At least. And why don't you write down some words from their viewpoint of the events that we've just been reading about? Even if you're on your phone and you want to go into the notepad and jot some things down, but why don't you write down a little bit of a monologue or some viewpoints? And then we'll spend the last few minutes together, sharing a little bit about what people have written. It doesn't have to be art, okay? It's okay if it's just kind of a journal entry, okay? And you can always revise it later, but I would love to hear what some of you have done. So go ahead and take a few minutes. So we're going to take at least eight to 10 minutes to write. Please stay with us so that we can then share, okay? Let's take about two more minutes to put some finishing touches on, and then we'll share a few of these. Okay, everybody. So I figure we'll take maybe three people to share their midrashic monologues. And then if anyone else wants to email them to me, it would be really nice if you're comfortable. I'm going to say, by emailing to me, you are consenting to have them published on our website that we can share as as a way of sharing with our congregation that you're writing as a midrashic monologue in honor of Second Day Rosh Hashanah, or in celebration of Second Day Rosh Hashanah. So by emailing them to me, that is what you're consenting to. So let's take three people who who want to share. So Rita, why don't you go ahead and share, please? Please unmute yourself.
This is a letter from Hagar to her mother. Hi, Mom. Hagar here. Thanks for thinking I needed matching towels in the bathroom. It's not the kind of thing I usually focus on. You know, you were right about something else. I should never have done that TV program on TLC, 90 Day Fiance. The guy really changed after 90 days. Besides, he was a bigamist. He'd been on the show before, and he had another wife. And guess what? She hated me because I had a kid, only because she'd made me sleep with the guy. Then after somehow she had a kid, she kicked me out. She not only kicked me out, she let her husband steal my story. I had a book contract, and the guy stole the
I had a book contract and the guy stole the story and took it for his own. Always the way in that book, women's stories stolen by men. Got to go now, trying out for another TV program next week called Jeopardy. Ain't that the truth?
Yasher Kha'ach, oh, look, you've got a rounding round of applause. Bravo. Yasher Kha'ach, that's great. And if you would like to email that to me to share online, please let me know. Wonderful. Oh, and the jubil, there's a clap from the jubileers. Okay, so David Tillis, please. And then Melanie, you're raising your hand too? Okay, so David Tillis.
Rita, that's a tough act to follow. So this is Ishmael. My brother is my brother. I do not care about the rivalries of my mother. My father's helplessness teaches me that I am strong when God's voice reaches me. Covenant is but a glorious prison. A wild boy without entrapments is my vision.
Wow. Wild boy, very nice. Very good. Excellent, Melanie. Wild boy without entrapments.
I've been obsessed with haiku lately, so this is very short. And it's not really midrashic, but this is the haiku. Freud had no idea, in the land of Bir Shiva, therapy begins. And I found the three parts on it, but it would take too long, so I don't want to take other time.
Well, we'll share that another time. That was wonderful, maybe Freud did know.
I feel so bad that I, I, it wasn't, I, it was a different poem, huh? I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, but there must, there must be many renditions about that story about Hagar.
Well, yeah, well, Melanie was speaking of her own work. And Melanie, that was, that was brilliant. You really summed it all up, didn't you? That's the joy of haiku. So if you wrote one and you would like to have it shared on our website so that we can share it with the congregation, or if you'd like to just share it with me, I would be honored. And you can just put a little note saying, don't, don't share it, but I just want to share it with you. That would be fine. I thank you all, Yasher Kha'ach, for wonderful discussion and considerations. You know, I, what, 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 Alan, what you're saying? You can, you can unmute, I don't, I don't, I don't know what you're scratching. Guys and dolls, what? Alan, what are you, you can unmute.
So instead of writing words, I, I found myself drawing a picture of this woman with her hair sticking out straight and smoking a cigarette. And it says Hagar equals Adelaide in Guys and Dolls.
Yes.
I need a smoke, I need a smoke.
A poison can develop a cold.
There you go. Here, Hagar.
I, I think we've asked some really important questions today. And so just to wrap up, I want to just consider, Rick asked us, who are our Hagars today? And that's a very, very important question. And that, that was really what led me to want to focus in so much on this question today. Because Hagar and Ishmael and the, the question of the other that Kivun is focusing on, our students are focusing on this year. We have been, we as Jews have been the other so many times, if not all the time in our history. But it is so much the nature of our history to make, it's so much the nature of our culture right now to turn whoever we want into the other. And that's not right. How much of that goes back to the Bible? To create an other, capital O, other. Ishmael, Hagar. Hagar translates to the stranger. The ger, ha-ger, the stranger. So have we been creating strangers from the very beginning? And, you know, Henry then asked, is it setting us up for all of our stories as well? For when we have been the ones cast out? We are, in, in a much more global sense, the ones who are going to be the ones who are sent out and cast out. And we need to develop sympathy and empathy for that. And that is another enormous question for us to ponder. And then finally, Alan reminded us as well of the importance in a family of the, the relationship between Sarah and Abraham and the ways that they treated each other poorly, or especially Abraham treated Sarah poorly from the very start. And, and how that came back to haunt him in other ways. And so with the High Holy Days, we have global questions. We have very close familial questions that we all need to wrestle with. Hopefully, the task of writing some of these midrashic monologues allowed you to consider some of them, either globally or very, very personally. And, and I really do thank you for, for logging on this morning for Second Day Rosh Hashanah. I thank our discussion leaders, Henry and Alan and Rick. I think all of you who volunteered to speak or to read or to share some of your writings. And thank you, everybody. So shanatova umituka, a good, a sweet, a healthy new year to everybody. Shanatova. Take care, everybody. Be well.